Let me call the April 16th, sorry, gotta get oriented to time and place. April 16th meeting of the Select Board in session is now in session. This evening, we will reorganize, that will be the majority of the evening, which means that we will elect a new chair, a new vice chair, and a new secretary. Unfortunately, Mark Doxer was unable to make it this evening, which he deeply regrets not being able to be here. So, we will have to do the liaison assignments at our next meeting because we need a full board for that. And that's, so the majority of the meeting, the point of this meeting is really for the board to reorganize itself and elect new officers. Before we do that, I'd like to, before we get into that, I would like to give a big, warm welcome to Ann Landry and Mark wherever you are. And, welcome to the board, Ann.
Thank you so much.
Would you, would any of the board members, either two board members like to say anything? Or, I was gonna have Ann say a few words.
Way to put us on the spot, thanks.
Nope, no, you know, it's my last night that I can do that.
I'm excited to have you, looking forward to working with you next year. Thank you very much.
I've said all that to you before, Ann, and said it again as you walked in this morning, so, welcome and join the party, here we go.
Very good. Well, thank you so much to the welcome from my fellow board members, and thank you to the residents and voters of Reading who have entrusted me with this responsibility, which I take very seriously. Regardless of whether you voted for me, I look forward to being of service to you. And thank you to my family and supporters, some of whom are here tonight. My husband Ryan and my son Michael are here.
So, now it's picture time.
Okay. So, we're gonna do the official...
Is the swearing, are the swearing in people here, come on up. We'll do the swearing in before we do the picture time with Ann.
Don't forget to speak.
Okay. He'll sign me. Okay. Don't worry about that. So, if you raise your right hand, your left hand on the Bible, and here's the oath that you shall read right here. Okay. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a member of the Select Board, according to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of Reading, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Ryan? We were gonna have a picture of the standing behind.
Are we all in this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Me too.
Yeah.
I'm not elected.
One goes Jackson has to go.
Congratulations.
Proclamation.
Is he reading?
He's gonna, he's gonna read it. Do you wanna start with the reorganization or the proclamation?
We're gonna, you know, do the proclamation and then get into reorg.
Why don't we talk about public comments?
You can do that if you like. Yeah. So, I'd like to turn the meeting now over to John Halsey, who has a proclamation to read.
Okay. Well, first, I think we have to move that the board proclaim the week of April 14th through April 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week here in Reading.
So, moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Oh, in favor? Okay.
And so, I'd like to share this proclamation with our public safety officials who are here with us today. And, you know, we don't do this often enough, but we get to have you visit us. You know, at least there's a week where there's kind of a thing where you're recognized. And, you know, in my opinion, before I read this proclamation, I just say to you, over these, over all the years I've lived in Reading, you know, it's just been, we always knew, whenever we needed somebody, they'd get there. And, you know, the reason that they get there is because we've got, you know, a dispatch unit that works, and kind of the whole team here in Reading is one that's always given me great comfort over 30 years. And I've had, you know, personal experience with, you know, with emergency visit. Paul stayed away from that one, he didn't wanna drag my big butt down the stairs, but... But, I will say that this is an important recognition for public safety, and let me read it. This proclamation reads that this is Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas there are 11 public safety dispatchers working for the town of Reading. And our public safety dispatchers serve the citizens of Reading with dedication, loyalty, and pride. And whereas the citizens of Reading rely on public safety dispatchers as their vital link to our police, fire, ambulance services, and our public safety dispatchers connect our citizens to our public safety providers, who may apprehend a criminal, who may save their possessions from a fire, or who may save their life or the life of a loved one. Each year, the second week of April is dedicated to the people who serve as public safety telecommunicators. And in 1991, the United States Congress proclaimed Public Safety Telecommunications Week as a nationally recognized week. The week of April 14th through April 20th, 2019, has been proclaimed National Public Safety Telecommunication Week in recognition of the contributions of public safety dispatchers and other telecommunicators nationwide. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Reading, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through 20th, 2019, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Reading, and we urge all citizens to recognize the considerable contributions of our public safety dispatchers, and we present this with, with much appreciation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do I just say a few words and then just speak?
Well, for those of you who don't already know, Deputy Chief Clark and Jackson here, I really don't have a lot to say, other than thank you very much. I have had a great time here with the Reading Police Department, Reading Fire Department, and the Town of Reading over the years that I've been here. I have the luxury of working with some amazing people throughout my years. And, that's really all I have to say, is thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to say that, again, thank the board for taking time out of your busy schedule for us. It's very important. The dispatchers are your first, you walk in the police station, the first people you see, you call 911, they're the ones answering the phone. They're making sure we get to where we need to go. And, that job, believe me, is not for everybody. That's a very tough job. It's one of, I'd have to say, one of the hardest jobs in the town by far. And it takes a special breed of people in there to be able to multitask, remember where everybody is, get everything where it needs to go, remember where everybody is, and still be pleasant and smile, and help them along in some of the most stressful situations. I know I couldn't do the job, so for our head dispatcher, Mickey Avery, and for the other dispatchers who work for us, I just wanna say thank you very much for your hard work. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Kevin Brown, who's my night patrol commander, who's actually a dispatch supervisor, who helps out of work and ensure everything goes smoothly. I'd like to thank our officers, Cody Costa, Josh Graffali, and Sergeant Badetson, who come tonight and show us support. And I just wanted to say, again, thank you for your time, it's important to recognize the hard work that they actually do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
I just wanted to just mention again, thank you very much behalf of the Fire Department. I'd like to point out to you, as we said when you met, that there was 11 public dispatchers. I wanted to point, I spent five long today with Lieutenant Brown and Vicki, like four hours today going over a variety of different things. One thing we don't mention all the time, Mickey Avery, 18 years doing this job, taking those phone calls that are hot-wrenching when they come across. When I was in there today, Sue Tappley and then Debbie Hines were sitting in there when I went in to say hello. That's 39 years of experience sitting in that room. That's what we have in the town of Reading, it's awesome. I know Joe Packdorff is probably sitting there watching TV from away from him, they spend both their 12 years apiece. That's a lot of dedication, you know, coming in and sitting there for that long, taking those phone calls that we don't hear unless the news wants to make it very hot-wrenching for us. They listen to it every day. And then they take those phone calls, they send us on our way, give us the resources that we need, and then go back and continue talking to those people that are having the worst day of their life. So, thank you very much for what you do.
I can't do it.
Okay.
I couldn't have received this without everybody that works for me and with me, just so that this wasn't just for me.
Here, appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice.
John, thank you very much for doing that. So, if the board is, if it's acceptable to the board that we hear public comments, so people who are here for public comments can say what they'd like to say before we get into our, our very important business. So, with that, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Again, remember that because of open hearing law, the board cannot, cannot respond to your comments or questions, but we do hear them. And, on the questions, we will try to get back to you. On the suggestions, we will, we will take that into consideration. I noticed that one member of the public is standing in the corner, Mr. Hagerty, or is it Congressman Hagerty, or?
Representative.
Representative Hagerty, thanks for coming tonight.
I appreciate it very much. I just wanted to come to congratulate everybody in their election, taking me in, and of course Mark as well, and send my best wishes to them and their families, and say hello to everybody. So, I'm sure I'll be back at some point soon to talk to everybody, and working through budgets and all that fun stuff now in Boston. I'm doing whatever I can to make sure we have the resources here in Reading to continue to do all the great work you guys do for the community, so, no doubt.
Just bring money.
Cards and letters, send money.
Let's not chase in Moyville.
But sincerely, I look forward to coming back sometime and talking more with you about the budget and everything that's going on, and give you a little bit of an update and answer any questions you might have, and hear back from certainly the members of the Select Board and, of course, members of the community as well.
Representative Hagerty, we look forward to seeing you again, thanks for coming.
Sounds great. To everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so, are we ready for public comment? Yep, in the back?
I'm actually an ophthalmologist in Reading, and my officer at Dunn Street here. I did send some letters to the board.
Could I interrupt you for a second? I forgot to remind people to state their name, which you did, and their address.
25 Meadow Drive, 25 Reading, Mass, at Reading Health Center.
Thank you.
So, I did send a letter to the board regarding the change of the speed limits on Baker Street. So, I just wanted to make a comment out of it, that I thought that this was, the changes, making a change to a uniform speed limit, I think was probably a good idea. And, however, the speed limit to 30 miles an hour, I think is a little bit too slow for that road. And I think there was some discussion regarding that, but it was sort of minimal at the meeting. I was not aware of that meeting, to be honest with you, until sort of after the fact when they put up the sign that said that they were gonna go around the speed limit. So, I did send a letter, and I thought that, I would just like to say that the policeman did a very good job at looking at the speed limits and doing the compliance and risk study. However, I think as according to the sort of methods and practices of setting speed limits, and I think everybody wants to be, people don't wanna go above the speed limit. I think that that's the case, and people would like to maintain, of course, this 85% compliance. So, looking at that, and actually looking at the speed data, it actually suggests that the speed limit should, that most people are driving at 35 miles an hour or greater. And actually, in those zones that were less than 35 miles, the speed limit was, most of the people are actually driving more than 30 miles an hour. But I think it's sort of, that's a big, you know, a major thoroughfare, there's like 12,000 cars, as they said, going back and forth on that road. And I think the, the speed limit of 30 is, I think painfully small. If you ask some of the residents, because they see them as patients, you know, they're, you know, say, this is really a little bit probably too slow, that probably 35 mile an hour zone would be reasonable to set throughout the whole area, except for the school. So, that was my, that's my comment, I think I'd like you to reconsider that speed limit, because I did, I do think it affects, you know, 12,000 people, 12,000 drivers a day. And it is a major thoroughfare. And I think people don't wanna speed, I think they prefer really not to be speeders. So, but I think you've gotta be reasonable with what that speed limit should be.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I did, we, I did read your email, was very well presented. Yes?
Hi, Demetrius, oh, did you know, go ahead. Oh, okay, so, I live on Oak Street, 106 Oak Street. I have two, so, first I wanna say my phone number, what is the police dispatch phone number? Is it 944-1212? My number when I moved here was 942-1212. So, I got all sorts of phone calls, and that lady has the hardest job ever. Thank God I changed my number. I'm a member of town meeting, and there's, I am, I have questions about, there's a patch of land that's for sale, that is proposed that we buy over $750,000. And I'm concerned, I went and walked it, and I wanna make sure, I walked along sort of a big triangle along the road that heads up to the gun club. Ah, Eberich is over here. I walked all through that, and it seems very close to wetlands to me, and that's sort of a thing for me. So, then I, it is my understanding that the CONCON, Conservation Commission, was not involved or not asked, not brought on board with this. I don't know if that's normal, it strikes me as it would be a good idea. And I wonder how do I see why that, I don't understand how that land can be developable unless it's sort of, in the olden days, when we didn't understand the importance of wetlands, it was called not wetland. So, I have questions, and I also, I have that concern. I don't know if you can answer those questions now, it looks like something's happened.
I'm just trying to find something. Actually, Demetrius, we're not, we're not supposed to respond, but we will, we will get...
Then my official ask would be that the Conservation Commission should know that. They don't know about it. They should look at it. And I would like to know, as a town meeting member, obviously, I want more information than what was presented to me in the articles by the town manager and by the Select Board.
Now, the town manager may respond. We just can't.
I'll say that if a landowner wants to make a donation to town, then that would be the appropriate time for CONCON to accept the donation, in which case we would skip town meeting entirely. These landowners did not wanna make a donation, so the appropriate channel is for the town as a whole to buy it, and then for future discussions to be potentially that one or more of the parcels could be then given to CONCON. In terms of the parcel itself, I'll just say that the independent appraiser did recognize wetlands and did not include those, but did find room for four single-family house lots and appraised it as such. And that appraisal was about a million three. But you're right, there's some wetlands in there for sure, and there's other parcels very much wetter than that.
Okay. And also, like, the guns go off all day long, so who wants to live there?
Right.
So, did the appraiser just look at the land, or did the appraiser look at the reality of?
He walked it. No, he walked it, he walked it a couple times, once when the gun club was in full swing. So, yes.
Okay. Thank you. More a town meeting.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, everyone, my name is Kristin Agresti, I live at 261 Central Street in Sargis, but I work for the Stock and Shop in Reading. I've been with the company for 33 years, and as everybody probably well knows now, we're on strike. Stock and Shop made over, what, $2 billion?
Two, over $2 billion.
Dollars last year. We're on strike, we're a union shop. There's 31,000 employees that are being affected, and we're kinda just asking for the support of the town. This is my business agent, Savannah, and we'd just like to say a few words on it.
So, this company does make a lot of money and profit. They're an outside company, they're from the Netherlands. They don't treat their workers back in their homeland the way they're treating the workers in this country, which is unfortunate. They're looking to take away their pensions, vacation time, holidays, because time of half's going away in the state little by little. So, that means that people would be expected to work holidays, Sundays, with no added benefits. They're proposing very small wages, where these people are basically at a minimum wage. The company is starting to promote propaganda to say that they are doing the best they can at the table to make this right for the worker. That doesn't seem to be the case, because they don't show up to sit and bargain with faith. So, we did have some people come to the store today that thought it would be a good idea for us to come to this meeting tonight, just to let people be aware that we've got well over 100 employees in the store that work very, very hard. Their loyalty to the store and the business is acknowledged, but this company is doing a very dirty deed. And so, we just ask for some support. We've been asking for people not to cross the picket line and show some support for these workers who, obviously during this Easter time, have to go without a paycheck. So, and we do also wanna thank the people that have come to support, and we've seen a big outreach of people dropping food off and donations of drinks and things like that, which we really think the world of, so we wanna, you know, say thank you for that. But we just kind of wanted to be to this meeting to maybe spread the word and, you know, let people know what's going on in, in this town, and we appreciate the time.
And the Reading Police Department has been phenomenal.
Yes, I do wanna add that.
Absolutely phenomenal.
Yes. They have been outstanding, they're there for support, they're very gracious, they get what's going on, they're union members themselves, so they're wonderful people, and they've done a great job, and we do wanna thank them for that. Even though Stock and Shop is paying them a lot of money for, we've got a lot of support out there, and that's great, we love the idea, and we do also wanna thank them for all their hard work.
Thank you very much for, for your words.
Yeah, just gotta go back and, maybe I'm gonna go stand on the line again. While that was a day, you could probably tell, because I've heard it on my face.
Put some sunblock on.
Thank you, thanks for your support, we really, really appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Bill, this is my last meeting, and you're not gonna make a public comment. I mean, my, my last meeting as chair.
Why do you think he's giving you a little gift? What do you think?
I hope Bob I behave myself.
Oh, well, all right.
Go wait on the next meeting.
Okay, see, no more public comment. We will now, I will soon hand the gavel over to Bob to run the reorganization part of the meeting, and then the new chair will run the rest of the meeting. I'd just like to take a minute or two to say what an honor it has been to serve as chair of this board. It has been a humbling experience, it's been a learning experience, a maturing one, and I highly recommend it to anyone. It's, it is a great job. From, from the public's perspective, I think any of you who've sat on boards or committees know that there are different types of boards and committees, and they're sort of like roads. We started off the year on a bit of a rocky road, you know, but we still, I felt we still kept moving forward, even though that it was rocky. And then as the year progressed, we got better at it, and I think the, the roads smoothed out. So, we're sort of, if you will, on dirt road and starting to produce more and move forward. And I'm looking forward to getting off of the horse and buggy and moving into a nice, a nice, maybe hybrid car or some all-electric car, and move onto some pavement for the next chair, for the next year. So, with that, I will, do I throw this at you, Bob?
You can just leave it there.
You don't need a gavel.
No, I don't need a gavel.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be quick, I just want to open the floor for nominations for chair. Nobody wants the job.
Yeah.
Andy?
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Vanessa Alvarado for chair.
Okay. Are there any other members that would like to make a different nomination? Sometimes the person not here gets put up for tasks.
I'm all for that.
I will eventually, yeah. Any other nominations? Okay, I'd ask the board to please accept that motion and move to close the hearings, or close the nominations. From, from the public's perspective, I, I think any of you who've sat on boards or committees know that there are different types of boards and committees and they're sort of like roads. We started off the year on a bit of a rocky road, you know. But we still, I felt we still kept moving forward, even though that it was rocky. And then as the year progressed, we got better at it and I think the, the roads smoothed out. So we're sort of, if you will, on dirt road and starting to produce more and move forward. And I'm looking forward to getting off of the horse and buggy and moving into a nice, a nice, maybe hybrid car or an all-electric car and move onto some pavement for the next chair, for the next year. So with that, I will, do I throw this at you, Bob?
You can just leave it there.
You don't need a gavel.
No, I don't need a gavel.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Thank you. I'll, I'll be quick. I just want to open the floor for nominations for chair. Nobody wants the job. Andy?
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Vanessa Alvarado for chair.
Okay. Are there other members that would like to make a different nomination? Sometimes the person not here gets put up for tasks.
I'm all for that.
I will eventually, yeah. Any other nominations? Okay, I'd ask the board to please accept that motion and move to close the hearings, or close the nominations.
So moved?
Second.
If you'd just mind voting.
All in favor?
All those in favor of Vanessa Alvarado as the next chair of the board? Okay, thank you. It's all yours, Vanessa.
I have to erase them. Okay. Okay, I will now open nominations for vice chair.
Oh. Do you want to?
No, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate John Halsey as vice chair.
A second. Any other nominations? All those in favor of John Halsey as chair, as vice chair?
Vice chair. Don't give up the job yet.
All right, I will now accept nominations for the role of secretary. And I actually spoke with Mark, who can't be with us this evening, and so I would like to nominate Mark as secretary.
Oh, I'm second that one. That's fantastic. I'll third that, yeah.
Any other nominations? All those in favor?
That'll teach them a lesson.
So, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a hearing for a driveway request. Do we have a public notice? Did anyone back it?
The vice chair has to step in and show that this is her job.
And as our new, here it is. Would you be so kind as to read the hearing?
Yes, I will. Got to find the email.
Let's give it to John, yeah.
God, it's coming. To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the select board of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on April 16th at 7:30 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on a request from the property owner for a second driveway curb cut at 321 Pearl Street. A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the town manager's office, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 7:30 to 5:30, Tuesday from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And will be in the select board packet on the website at www.reddingmas.gov. All interested parties are intended, are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing by email prior to 6:00 PM on April 16th, 2019 to the town manager. This is by order of Robert W. Lauret, town manager, and dated April 9th, 2019.
Bob, will you be explaining the question?
Certainly. A applicant here? Yes, okay. Do you want to say anything, Ryan? I can go here. We'll get you on, Bob. Ryan, personal town engineer.
Nice to meet you. So just briefly, we have driveway rules and regulations and which stipulate you cannot have a driveway, two driveways with minimum distance of 125 foot separation between the two. The proposed driveway, which is on the left-hand side, which is currently an existing gravel driveway, is only 31 feet from the existing paved driveway. The reason for this driveway, which I will tell you, was actually denied by the engineering office per the driveway rules and regulations and then subsequently went to the PTTF for review. The driveway during the review for the PTTF, this driveway will be utilized for ADA access to the stair area on the left-hand side. They have issues with getting from the current driveway, going down Pearl Street and then getting into their house for handicap access. So they propose to have the secondary driveway to do such. Engineering and public safety and the rest of the PTTF had no issues or objections to this driveway. I will tell you, there was also a driveway, budding driveway?
Yes.
That recently, back in 2016, was approved for a secondary driveway as well. So what's in front of you is a waiver for the driveway rules and regulations to allow a secondary driveway to be put in.
And we saw from the packet there are no concerns from...
No, there's no concerns from public safety. There's also, they're also on a curve, which makes it a little bit more difficult for them to come out of the driveway and come down Pearl Street, which if you've been on that road, it's narrower to begin with. And to get up into that area to be dropped off onto where they would come in for handicap access because there was a gray change there, it's difficult for them to do it on that existing driveway.
Any questions?
I drive by there every day and I, you know, it just seems like, where the gravel driveway is, seems to be a natural place to have your driveway, to be honest with that. And particularly if there's ADA issues, just, you know, I, and one of this gentleman's neighbors came to us a couple of years ago for the, for this similar thing. I mean, you know. I don't think Pearl Street had the same kind of traffic patterns that it does today. Those homes were built and those driveways were kind of the, the downgraded driveways. So I, I think this is a good idea. I've visited the site daily when I drive by it, so.
Great. So I will open it up to comments from the public. Seeing none. Can I have a motion to close the hearing on driveway request?
Move that the board close the hearing on the driveway request regarding 321 Pearl Street.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Can I have the motion to approve driveway request?
Move that the board approve the driveway request for 321 Pearl Street as presented and amended.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Need a second.
Oh, second.
Second.
Jumped the gun. All those in favor? Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Okay. So we're a little ahead of schedule. Bob, do we have any information yet regarding the...
Next door.
Recreation. They're still next door. Okay.
Have to go look. Do you want to do board liaison and town manager reports now?
Sure. Do we, why don't we start with liaison reports? John, why don't you kick us off?
Yeah. So this one is actually a little bit, well, it's not really dated, but we did, we skipped them the last meeting. And this really is in connection with my assignment to Postmark Square. We've all got responsibilities relative to some of the building projects that are going on. And I just think it's timely to just keep you up to date on what's going on. I'm sure, you know, most everybody that's watching this or sitting here or sitting with us sees it going on on a regular basis. It's in full steam. And, you know, one of the things, when you start doing the kind of work that they're doing, there is a natural concern, kind of the way that the topography is laid out there with the amount of rain that we've been having. But I will tell you that the way that they've arranged this project, they have a storm, water management program that's being managed onsite during construction. Ultimately, that'll tie out, you know, to the municipal stormwater, which is kind of being redone. You know, they're redoing how that's going to be done. So they've actually got a detention area on the west side of the building and that's pretty important because they've got neighbors over there. And I can tell you, I've talked to the, the abutting neighbors and they're having a steady flow of communication, which is awesome. It's just kind of exactly what we'd hoped for. And frankly, it's, you know, we have, we've met the developers, one of which is a Reading resident. It's not a surprise that we're having that kind of attention paid to that kind of work. It's pretty interesting that they have not been affected in any way and there was actually, in a prior iteration while it was the post office, a couple of the neighbors did have some water issues, actually. So that improvement is going forward. It's, it's interesting. I, I visit the site usually about once every week or 10 days and, you know, kind of get a hard hat tour, which is kind of interesting, actually. The, there's a, they actually get a day like we, like we had yesterday with all that rain. They get kind of radar reports from a civil engineer as to what's going on, what the expectation is, what the rainfall will be, and they kind of adjust themselves accordingly. One of the things that has been happening since I reported last, kind of because we skipped last time, was the excavation of the back is going full steam. You know, one of the changes that they made was that they made a decision to, rather than, you know, cut and paste the basement floor, they just decided at their cost to take everything out. They just thought it would make for a better project because, so, yeah. They want you to dance to stand up and get that out of your car.
I, I don't know how to change the ring. Yes, yes.
Usually throw it against the wall. It stops usually when that happens. So the excavation's going on full steam and has been now for several weeks. And, you know, they've taken some other, I think, very proactive steps. They've kind of built a gravel exit out of the, out onto Haven Street so that it'll minimize the amount of dirt that's coming out. And they're actually policing that area every day following, you know, a day of excavation. So there has been one complaint and the complaint was a, was a noise complaint. They had discovered some ledge that they didn't realize they had and they needed to spend an afternoon, you know, with a, with a hammer. And I, they went and visited the neighbor, explained exactly what was going on. The neighbor understood what was going, was happening and appreciated that they got it done quickly and moved on. So I think in general, this project is, is really exactly kind of the model that I think we're looking for, where there's good communication with the abutting neighbors. The plans are moving forward as they were expected or they're improved on. There's good communication between these developers and town hall. I think I'm speaking correctly when I say that, Bob. So, you know, I think this is, we're going to expect more of the same. The next thing that you'll see, if it didn't, I think it might have started today, is the forms will be out where all the excavation's been going on and it'll start pouring and, you know, it'll start pouring concrete for its underground parking garage. That's kind of what's going on at Postmark Square. And that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Yes, I went to a climate advisory committee meeting last Wednesday and the take-home message from that is they are donating a tree to town. I can't find my notes on exactly the type of tree, but they will be dedicating that at, not birchmano.
Oh, barrows.
At barrows, thank you. I knew it was one of the Bs. And Bob, do you know the time for that?
I don't.
Okay. So, but please look on, on the town website. We'll, we'll get the word out about the time. The other, the other thing is, I thought Gene Borowski was going to show up tonight and, and do the promotion for Reading 375. As you know, this summer, we have a big celebration going on. The Reading 375 Committee is doing a lot, is putting in a lot of volunteer hours to make this event possible and, and make it successful. So I will try to give a brief version of which the points that she liked or the, or the committee likes me to get across. They would love to see any and all elected officials take a selfie with a T-shirt or a button. The, the T-shirts and buttons are for sale. They're at RCTV, I believe. They are at the book...
White Lambors.
White Lambors died around, around the corner. And I believe the shirts are at Reading Trophy. So, but anyway, they would like to see us get out there and take a selfie with a button around town. I am remiss at doing that and, and I will do so. You can, again, you can support Reading 375 by buying a T-shirt or buying a button. They're very, the buttons are 375, the T-shirts are 20. And all the proceeds go to support the Reading 375 celebrations. So I just, I, I'll, I'll cut it short here, but know that the, the events start, the celebratory events start on May 31st and will go to June 15th. Please visit their website and look for the events that they have up. There's a lot of, I can't recommend them enough. And that is all I have.
Great. Andy?
So although I'm not an official liaison for the project, Mark Docter and I last week attended the Wakefield zoning boards meeting, part of which dealt with the Terren Lane project. Most of the traffic impact of that project will be in Reading. There was, there were representatives from an association that had conducted a traffic study and they, they went over the traffic study as well as the slightly reduced traffic impact based on the now projected reduction in units from 190 to 173 units. But at the end of the day, the, the, the traffic impact will have a negative impact on Reading. They're projecting that what's now rated in a E on a scale of K through F at South, South Street and Main is now projected to be, be an F. And they, the developer did say perhaps that could be, be diminished and have a lesser impact if the state were willing to extend the amount of, of time at the light. It seems like there's a lot that's still very much up in the air with respect to that project. One member of the board talked about wanting Wakefield to be a good neighbor to Reading in, in this process, but design, including number of units, still seems to be up in the air. And any safety concerns and whether the developer could do something to address safety concerns still is also an open question. They've extended the hearing to May 8th. It didn't, there was no indication that everything would be wrapped up by May 8th, but the, the conversation continues May 8th with a focus on, on architecture and design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have two reports. Last month, the ad hoc committee to consider a human rights commission met. We had our very first meeting. It was incredibly productive. We will need a new member of this board to join me on that ad hoc. So once we do the liaison assignments, we can determine that. The CPDC met a couple of weeks ago. They're reviewing some updates to policy, specifically around CBD and hemp products in addition to mixed use, new use, and considering changes to expansions or additions to single families to have some amount of control over conversions to two families. So with that done, Bob, given that we haven't heard yet from recreation, do you want to...
I've poked, they'll be here when he's ready.
Okay, great. You want to start the town manager report?
Certainly. A couple of dates, on Thursday, the 25th, next week. The Garden Club has an Adopton Island kickoff meeting. That's the second night of town meeting, so really no staff or elected officials will be able to attend. But they will be joining you at your next meeting on May 7th to help promote their plant sale on the common, which is scheduled for the 18th of May. Also, we're having a new resident open house on Tuesday, April 30th. I was not able to make the first one last year. I was actually on vacation. This year I'll be very interested to see it. We got a lot of really good feedback. We, through Realtors, we get lists of people who have moved to Reading recently. And we just reach out and all the various departments are represented and as well as some elected officials.
and as well as some elected officials. This will be at the library, and Amy is largely in charge of it, although there are others. And it was really, again, very, a very successful thing last year. We just invite you all again to come Tuesday night, April 30th, if you don't have a meeting scheduled. I want to congratulate Dr. John Doherty, who did something that was insane yesterday for 26.2 miles. He ran in the marathon, and for those that know John, he also had plantar fasciitis and wasn't able to walk last week. So his, his, his real test was when he finally got on his feet to start the marathon, and he was able to finish the marathon. I have a great deal of respect for that. And I give him a lot of congratulations, and I talked to him early this morning. He was at his post, ready for the day. So he's a little sore, but again, congratulations to John. He ran for Rosie's place. So it was a really very nice accomplishment. Last week, in rather hasty fashion, the town manager had to adopt some design rules and regulations. Many of our peers were calling emergency selectmen and select board meetings last week. There was an FCC deadline of April 14th over the weekend that had slipped some people's attention, and there was some misinformation out, out there about it really wasn't a deadline. But as of Monday last week, we learned it was a deadline, or actually as of Tuesday. In Reading, we had a fortunate, well, we have a fortunate experience having a great town council, but we have some zoning bylaws that cover part of this issue already. And the only remaining issue, I was able to adopt a policy because our general bylaws allow me to, to adopt DPW policies. So I won't say which communities I stole and changed the name, but it worked very well. It took me a grand total of 37 minutes to adopt eight pages of a, of a bylaw. So let any board and committee try to challenge that, and I'm told it's a very good one. So that was a bit hasty, but they'll, we'll kick that over to the, probably the CPDC in the future to look at it. But if the town had no rules and regulations in place on the 14th, then basically the cable providers and specifically on 5G could start hanging things over on the public way and telephone poles at their discretion. And the town would have no say over it. So fortunately, we, we avoided that. And lastly, some, some really good news on health insurance. We successfully finished our negotiation last week with the PEC. The PEC is a group of unions from the towns, the schools, and the light department. They voted last week 85% in favor, 0% opposed, and 15% absent to an agreement. And I'm happy to announce that next year, the premiums will be negative 3.5%. And that followed a year of negative 0.6% the year before. So there probably aren't many private sector or public sector communities that have two consecutive negative numbers in health insurance. And perhaps most impressively, we put together a very aggressive meeting schedule for next year, starting in September. Normally, we don't start negotiating until March. We're going to start next September to really take a serious look at some, some big changes and big options. So I want to thank all the unions involved. They're a really good partner. And our budget as a result is, is really in very healthy shape. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. I realized we were remiss earlier. I want to take a moment to thank Barry Berman for his years of service to the town. He was a strong advocate for economic development in town and is one of the reasons why we've made the advancements that we have. So thank you, Barry, for out there watching. It was an honor to serve with you, and I wish you well going forward. So as we continue, why don't we shift over to the town accountant update?
Adam, too?
Yes.
Is it possible to, to ask a question of the town manager?
Sure, absolutely.
Very interesting.
Absolutely.
I was just thinking, would it be possible to, so issue some kind of statement or put something out on social media about this, about, in celebration of the success with the, with the projections around health insurance?
Sure.
I was just, I think it's the kind of thing that good news often doesn't get out there, and it's, it's, I think, encouraging, and I think residents would be glad to know.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to congratulate Ann and Mark.
Oh, thank you very much, Sharon.
You're welcome. So I'll start by going over a few things, and then I'll move into a financial update. Our fiscal 18 audit is finally complete. We have our audited financials, and we'll be scheduling with the audit committee soon to go over those results. The audit did go well. There was no issues. Our finances were delayed a little bit because we needed a new 375 report that's provided by our actuary, which was delayed. So we finally got that report, and in time for our continuing disclosure, which is wonderful. And so the audit committee should be meeting soon. I know a select board member is usually assigned to that audit committee, and so I'm sure you'll be hearing about that soon. And then we also plan the audit for fiscal 19, so hopefully that will be coming soon. Our assistant town accountant has been training with me, and I've been able to train her on a few things and delegate things down. But as we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, it's crucial training time for her because there's a lot of things that happen at the end of year that only happen once a year. The processes that I go through when we close the year, certain journal entries that are only done once a year, closing this, the year in munis, which is involved, it's only done once a year. Free cash, calculation, Schedule A, tax recap. I really want somebody else to at least be familiar with what goes on in doing all of that. There's the end of year report that the school is responsible, responsible for, but I do provide information that they use in that report. So we're involved in a lot of different things. So I'm hoping to get her involved in as much of that as sheer as I humanly can because I feel like it would be very beneficial to all of us. So that's going well. Training has been going well, so that is great. I also wanted to give an update on our new cash management module. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we had gotten a grant that NG, our Assistant Finance Director Treasurer, had applied for, and it gave us a cash management module through munis and a new HR module. We have installed that cash management module, and now we're in process of doing some work on our end to get it up and running. It should provide increased efficiency for our cash reconciliation process. We have a lot going on, so the cash reconciliation is a time-consuming process just by sheer volume, and it helps us match some things automatically, which makes it so much faster. So hopefully, it works the way we hope. So I forget an update on that would be nice. So I'm going to go into an update of where we are as of April 11th. That was when I ran these reports. These did show in your packet. I think they started on page 5D1, if you wanted to follow along there. But I'm going to put it on the screen in case anybody's watching. I'm going to start with the general fund revenues. Wow, that's small. How did I make this bigger?
There you go.
That's not what I wanted. Oh, zoom. Yeah, that would be right. Zoomed to a good page.
I'll try to set it to 75 around.
Yeah. Where's the percentages?
Here's zoomed to, does that give you an option?
It says different page. Oh, here it is. Sorry. Not familiar with this format. Everything 75 would be there. Maybe it looks big, but it is in your packet. These are the revenues summarized by category, and I highlighted a few things that would stand out as a little strange and would kind of draw my attention to look closer. So at this point of the year, revenues kind of tend to come in pretty equally across the year. And so at this point of the year, I would expect revenues to be in that 75 to 80% range. So anything that falls significantly below there, I'm going to look a lot harder. And so some of the items, when I'm looking, and this is just the high-level review. I might drill into other things as well, but I highlighted a couple of things that did draw my attention enough to want to provide backup to you. So payment and lieu of tax came in at 55.8. I'm like, wow, that's low. Of course, I probably didn't recall what happened last year, but when I drilled into this, I noticed, and I actually documented it for you down below, payment and lieu of tax. RMLD pays about $300,000 in payment and lieu of tax, and instead of quarterly, they pay it biannually. So they pay January and June. And so that second payment isn't in there. So it's enough, because it's a smaller line item, to cause that to look kind of funky. And then other support is actually includes some rentals, what's a, a support for facilities of $100,000 and $25,000 from cemetery lots that supports our general fund budget. And one of those supports hasn't been recorded yet because it comes through the school department and waiting for their approval to book that entry. So those look a little strange, but they're perfectly okay from my perspective at this point. I'm going to go ahead and show you the expenses. So I run this report the best way I can to make it so that you're not looking at 100 pages of documents. So I, I do at high level, I, I run the expenses by department in the way that would be most helpful to look at because we do, for most departments, vote salary and expense at town meeting. There are some departments that are excluded from that. That would be the school department is voted bottom line, facilities is voted bottom line, snow and ice, those are some examples where we wouldn't be kind of voting salary expense. It would be a bottom line number. But I usually will run a report like this just to kind of make sure that nobody's negative on any one of the lines that they're voting, and that the percentages seem in line with my expectations. And so at this point, I feel like things are in line with my expectations. You know, expenses don't tend to be expended equally throughout the year, so when they're a little bit high, I might look at them, but it wouldn't, you know, necessarily mean anything's wrong. Salaries, I would be a little bit concerned if something is more than 75, 80% at this point because I'd be looking to see, do we have a transfer scheduled at April town meeting if it looks like we're trending high? Nothing really drew my attention too much in the general fund, except a couple of items I just figured I would clarify for you. This line here, this 401 DPW trash, snow, street, and lighting, that's three separate lines of the budget. And so, and it looks rather crazy because it says we spent 202% of salaries in it. I just kind of point out in my comment that it is bottom line, so you could be negative in one line and positive in another line as long as overall you're, you're not in a deficit, you're fine. But it is also a line that actually is combining three different budget lines from the, the actual budget report that you see at town meetings. So, and, and when I drilled into this a little bit further, I realized, even though it looks like everything's all well and good, when I looked into snow and ice even further, I found that there was a deficit that we need to cover at April town meeting. So up until a week or two ago, there wasn't one, so bills just keep trickling in. And so it's fortunate that we are all looking periodically because we now know that we need a transfer at April town meeting that wasn't needed a couple weeks ago. So, so that's, that's another line that drew attention. And then also, yep.
May I ask a quick question on that? So for the salaries, um, it looks, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like we've already used twice the amount that we expected to use, and it's not even the end of the year. Is there a reason for that?
Well, because most of it's probably snow and ice wages. Because a lot of the money that we spend in snow and ice is the people going out and doing the plowing. And so it's just how it's distributed amongst the lines. But as I said, it's a little bit deceiving because snow and ice is in here along with DPW trash and lighting. All of these particular items are actually voted bottom line. And so if, it can be used either way. They're kind of transferable. You could have extra money on expense and use it on salary and vice versa. So sometimes they're contracting out for some of their, you know, snow removal, and sometimes it's being done by, you know, depending on how bad a storm is. So a lot of times, I would say salaries is probably very heavy for us for how we remove snow. But as long as overall, it doesn't go over the overall budget that has been, you know, assigned for that line item, we're good. And it could change from year to year. They could use more contracted staff, and that would be expenses, so.
Right, right. And I understand that this is a sort of guessing for the future when you.
Yeah, when they're, when they're projecting it, maybe based on history. But year to year, it could be different depending on what kind of storms, how major the storms are, how, how much our staff can cover on their own, and how much they have to call in extra staffs.
Okay, thank you.
And then another item I highlighted, because it looked very high percentage-wise, is debt. And when I look into that further, I say, okay, well, that's fine because all I have is one debt payment left, and there's plenty of money to cover. So, and it's due in June. So, so that's kind of some of what I'm doing when I'm looking at it is, does all of this make sense? And when I see a number that's really high, are we in danger of going over? Do we have a transfer at town meeting? And there is no need for a transfer here because there's plenty of money there. There's only one debt payment left that needs repaying. So that's the general fund. I'm going to go ahead and show you the enterprise funds. So as far as water and sewer and stormwater, they're projecting, I think they're kind of tasting a little bit. I nearly made this one bigger. Not that big. That be able? Maybe. Does this actually make it to the big screen?
No.
No?
Sharon, if you hit that, see the sidebar?
Yeah. Make that go, yeah, that would help.
Now you can make it bigger if you want, and it'll fit on the page.
Do you think I need to make it 100? So Harwin's behind you to know if people can say, "Oh!" So you can see that for water, we have 89.6% of our revenues that we projected collected, and we've got two and a half months left to collect. I have no concerns that we're going to have a deficit in revenue for water. I mean, not to say it couldn't happen, but.
Will we have a surplus over budget?
Yeah, it looks like we will. But it's hard to say, but I mean, judging by this, I would say yes. Or did I actually, oh, all of them all, sorry, I missed it. Do that again. If I scroll down further, I, you'll see.
So is it safe to say, could, could we talk for just a second for the benefit of the whole board? We're going to, on the water revenues?
Yep.
If we're going to exceed, kind of to the point of a previous discussion not long ago?
Yeah.
I think it's really important for us to note this for the next time it comes up.
Sharon, is exceeding our revenue, um, is that a historical consistency? So does that, do we tend to have a surplus every year, or is this an anomaly?
It seems like we have a surplus every year. But I mean, we do have, tend to have a conservative budgeting style to ensure that we don't have deficits that we need to make up for. So there, I think it's, you should have some regeneration in this area. You don't want to be so tight with it that you're not actually collecting all of it. So I, I feel like we do have regeneration, and we have over the last several years. I can't tell you off the top of my head what the trend is because I wasn't thinking about that. But we do tend to have regeneration all through, at varying levels.
For future discussions, to John's point, it might be helpful to have historical data on what that regeneration is.
We definitely have it. I just don't have it with me.
Anecdotally, I seem to remember this conversation, you know, over the last five years. But I think for next year, it would be valuable for us to, you know, pull that in, because we just had this discussion, you know, two meetings ago. And I think it would be valuable for us to be able to, next year, look at that history and look at where, where your, your forecasts are so close all the time. I mean, if you tell us we're going to have a, you know, an excess revenue, I believe it. Because that's what happens, you know, I mean, you know, your skills in that area have been, you know, demonstrated over and over again. So I think that'd be helpful to us for next year.
I agree. Maybe the next time we meet, I could even give you that historical data just so you have it.
So it's not lost, though. The problem is, we talk about water and sewer rates, you know, like.
I agree. If we can wrap this into a future discussion on rates, that would be helpful because it'll inform our decision on how we set those rates. Bob, did you have a?
Yeah, there's two forces at, at work here that's difficult to isolate. One is the ongoing conservation of people, water usage. But then the other is new water customers. The town, you know, we know how many accounts, but we don't necessarily know really how much water is being used. The board did face a difficult decision five or six years ago. We had underestimated the amount of conservations. We didn't sell as much water as we hoped, and you had to raise rates by 10% just because of that. So that's the downside in not being cautious and using a estimate that will presumably be exceeded, and you'll sell more water than, than your budget. It's much safer to do that, have it flowing in reserves than to have to raise the rates.
Is it, is it Madam Chair or Miss Chair, Miss Chair?
Madam Chair.
I think we should go with Vanessa.
I like that, I like that.
Okay, fine. I like Madam Chair, but that's.
Be careful with Madams.
Well, yeah, anyway.
Here we go.
Vanessa. May I, I wanted to ask Sharon a question. I agree with John's point about, you know, looking at the last 10 years or so because this is not something we really want to be making money off of by just covering our expenses. But I did note that this, this total, this is a total budget of over $7 million. Is that correct? correct? And right now, so 7 million, right now, we have a little more than half a million and I'm sure that'll be whittled down between now and the end of the fiscal year, correct?
You mean, half a million that we haven't collected yet? So we've collected 6,338,642 and we have 736 yet to collect.
We're 90%, just about.
We're at 89.6%.
Yes, I was looking at the total revenues line. Is that the correct one?
Yes. Oh, I think you're looking at, see, when you look at available budget, that's the budget that's remaining to be collected.
Remaining to be collected.
It can be confusing looking at this, so I maybe should have explained that. So when you're looking at this, when you see the original appropriations, our original budget we started the year with, if anything's in the transfer and adjustments, it's because we've made some adjustment at a town meeting. And so then we have a revised budget. And then year-to-date actual is what's been actually collected. And then for revenues, if you have an available budget, it means that it's money that's not been, available budget is very misleading, but it means that we haven't collected that amount of the budget yet.
Okay.
So it does read kind of funny as you pointed out, but that's kind of how these management reports are, they're not perfect in every way.
So that's not a fair comparison that it's a $7 million budget and we're saving X amount of dollars?
It's hard to know how much extra we're going to have because we haven't fully collected the $7 million. So it's hard to really know, but it looks like we're trending faster than I would expect. So yes, we'd have some excess at the end. What would you expect at this time? I would expect us to be somewhere in that 75 to 80% range and so being at 89, yeah, so we're a little ahead. And you don't know, receipts could slow down and we could just get there. It's hard to know, but it seems like it's ahead of expectations is what I would say.
Isn't it safe to say that this is the time of year that sprinklers go on?
We're actually collecting though off of the time when they don't go on.
When they're not on, yeah.
Oh, that's right. Because collections don't happen. Those collections won't happen until next fiscal year, right?
Seasonally, you probably would normally be around 80, let's say, or 85 even.
So it's hard to know. I mean, it seems to me we would have some level of regeneration just from this area of revenue. And it seems to be standard throughout. So if I go to sewer, they're at 90% of their budget, 90.4%. So I see that we don't have any concern about a deficit here. Definitely some sort of regeneration will happen for sewer as well as my expectation. And the same thing is true for storm water. Not as much of course, but they've pretty much almost collected the entire thing to 89.4. So all of them are very healthy in terms of what we've collected. Usually there's more of a look on my part is to be sure that we're not going to have a deficit. Obviously getting too much money is never a problem for me, but I get what you're saying. You don't want to be charging too much money.
Yeah, I mean, we've kind of gone, over the last few years, there's some things we've done, you know, around excise tax.
It's kind of hard to know what usage is going to look like, honestly. It's hard to know.
Well, you know, in looking at this, the other thing I saw, and you haven't gotten to it yet, but it looks like the expenses are trailing in the other direction. So our expenses are trailing low and our revenues are trailing high. And, you know, that would have been valuable information. We just need to think about pulling that information together.
Well, the expenses seem on track for the time of year, correct?
So we are. It seems that way. I mean, there are definitely some things that head you like, oh, geez, what's going on there? And I'll pull that up next if you guys are okay with these slides, so.
So Vanessa, so really, we can't really tell yet how much money we might be making off of this.
No, not, it's too soon to say for sure. Yeah, it's just kind of an update, where are we as of April 11th is all you're referencing?
Right, we have to match the revenues to the expenses.
But you can make some assumptions looking at it like, hey, so in terms of like, this is high level for water. They're at 73.3%. So they're close to where I'd expect to overall.
Yeah.
But capital's kind of, you know, on the low side. And so that's not unusual because in water, sewer and storm water, a lot of the projects that they're looking to award for capital projects are done in the warmer months, so they're awarding them now. And so sometimes they have an encumbered them and they usually get a little rapping from me going, are you going to have this done by June 30th because I don't want this money to close out? And so I did have a discussion with each one of, you know, on each one of these water, sewer and storm water with the town engineer to see where are you, you know, Ryan? Where are you in these processes? And most of them are either out to bid right now or have just been awarded and will be encumbered shortly. And so that's where we are with water and sewer and storm, actually. I actually have a slide if you want to see the detailed projects, but essentially what I got to when I asked about capital was that each and every one of the items I questioned were either out to bid and are about to be awarded or already awarded and are waiting assigned.
So they're going to get it spent before you hit to the end, get to the end of the fiscal year?
And I just try and do that as a courtesy too to just remind them, hey, in case you forgot, this money's been awarded, can you make sure that this is going to be encumbered by year end? So this is kind of high level, there's, you know, and this is just summarized too so that you don't have to see all the lines that make it. I could always provide any level of detail if it's ever needed, but this is the most compact way for me to show you financial data. For sewer, if we move on, capital was the only thing I was really looking at. Again, sewer capital was the only thing, but then I did look at the debt and there's one, there's only one payment left for sewer, that's 351,200. And so that's the majority of what's left in available budget and it's due in June. So that's why that looks funny. And then the capital, again, same sort of thing, projects that are out to bid or have just been awarded. And once they've signed a contract, they do what they call an encumbrance, it's a PO, it holds the money, brings it forward to the next year. So if the project spans two multiple years, the money is going with it to the next year so you're not worried about running out of money. And as far as storm water, it was the same sort of thing. Capital was, but I have a couple other comments here. Salaries look low. Storm water is a very small department, two employees, and we're down a person, so salaries are trailing dramatically what we would expect. So there's definitely going to be turn back there regarding salaries. And expenses, when you only have one person, like from my conversation with the DPW director, there definitely can be some trailing of expenses because only one person's working, only so much is getting done. And then also they spend more in the spring and summer, you know, so that's, that would be a reason why that's trailing so much. And then capital, the same thing, things out to bid. One thing they weren't sure, they're like, we're trying really hard to get that one encumbered by year end. But it's nice to have that reminder from me or from Bob, whoever actually asked the question, hey, this is sitting up here, why is it not encumbered? And so we're all looking at it because we don't want to see money that's been assigned for a project go away because nobody was paying attention, so. That's pretty much all I have to share with you unless you have more questions.
Anybody have any questions for Sharon?
Fine. The last one is, how are we doing getting that one person who's all alone a companion?
For that, I don't know.
HR legal issue. Can't say. Not a town issue.
Right, got it.
But it ends up being a regeneration issue because we have a budget and we're not spending it. So you're actually going to see money coming back to their certified, they call it a certified surplus when it's an enterprise fund, free cash when it's the general fund, so it will go back to the surplus.
So the HR can't say, we're interviewing or...
It just dramatically affects the way this looks, but I don't really know much more than that.
Sure.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sharon. So thoroughly.
Do you want to start or do you want to take five minutes and I can walk next door again, see where they are?
Why don't we take a five minute break?
Okay, I'll let you know.
Reading Little League, writing baseball regarding a gift for some of the fields. So I will turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for the time on the agenda. As you said, my name is Mike Wondolowski. I'm the president of Reading Little League. I've been a Reading resident for 11 years now. My wife and I moved up here to the Brooks Meadow area. We have three young boys. I became the president of Reading Little League last September, and one of the real things that we want to do is enact some change, change in the positive sense. And I'll try to work through these presentations quickly, but please feel free to let me know if you have any questions as we go along. So the first thing that we did is we actually sent a survey out to all of our parents. We had 454 kids play last year in Reading Little League. Happy to say that number's higher this year. But that being said, we really wanted feedback from the individuals that were paying the dues to play baseball in town. And from that, we came back with and created a capital improvement plan. And we started prioritizing what were the projects we wanted to do first, second, third, and on down the line. So hopefully, you actually start seeing my face more frequently, as long as this evening goes okay. So that being said, the first thing that was top of our list is doing some work at what we call Majors Field. Some of you may know that as tennis court field. These are the high school tennis courts down here. The high school in Rise, preschool is in this area here. So when you look at that field on a nice sunny day, it probably looks like the best town to play baseball, or best field to play baseball in in town. That being said, if you came to it even two days after a rainstorm, we lose the most games and practices actually at this field, I believe due to the foundationary material underneath the infield itself. In addition to that, one thing that's newer, maybe about the last five or so years when it comes to Little League, is once you get into the 11 and definitely 12-year-old age range, they're able to play the game at a larger dimension. Okay, so just have a diagram here in just a moment. Basically, that larger dimension would be a 50-foot pitch to met the home plate, 70-foot base pass. And once again, it'll be simple to see in just a minute. That being said, we do not have a 50-70 field in Reading currently. It forces us to rent space, so our home field for Reading Little League 12-year-old players over the summer is actually down at Pine Banks Park in Malden, where we paid about $3,000 last year to rent field space in order to participate in what's called the Bay State League. Surrounding towns that have 50-70 fields, I won't name them all, but you'll see some Andover, Bedford, North Andover, Winchester, just to name a few here. So what we're starting to propose here, hopefully you'll see, is dual purpose, being able to play at an additional dimension that we don't have today in Reading, and then secondly, to vastly improve the materials that the infield is used at, to hopefully have fewer rainouts and rainout practices. So to oversimplify things, this is your standard Little League field, and this is what Majors Field is today. It's a 46-foot home plate to pitcher's mound, 60-foot base pass. All a 50-70 field is, is having a 50-foot pitcher's mound, 70-foot base pass. The purpose of this is after you get from a 12-year-old, you go into a 13-year-old, and then you get a 13- and 14-year-old, you start playing at a major league-sized diamond. This helps ease the transition to the larger diamond. By doing this, it's really important to note that the field could be used at its current dimensions, but also at the new dimensions as well. Okay, so become more flexible for both. We could use it with a seven-year-old game, and if we want to use it for a 12-year-old game, either later that day or the very next day, we could do so by moving the bases and things like that. So from a high-level view, the big thing to understand is that with this project, none of the fencing or perimeter of the field would change at all. We would not change a fence. What would happen that you'd find is you'd find that the infield dirt would be moved back approximately 10 feet, and you would find that the mound would be larger to accompany what you'll see on the next slide, which would be, if I can get there, oops. A mound that would actually effectively have two pitching rubbers. Okay? The first would be the exact location where it is today, which is 46 feet to home plate. The second would have an additional rise by two inches vertical and four feet back for to be able to play at the 50-70 dimension as well. So our recommendation here is to rebuild the infield at Majors with higher-quality foundational materials. Also allow for games to be played at either the 40-60, 46-60, which is current, and 50-70 dimensions in the future for all 12-year-olds. We would slate the work to be completed in fall of 2019. This would be wholly a gift to the town, paid by Reading Little League Baseball. Once again, there'd be no change to the perimeter of the field, fencing, anything along that lines. And the work would be done by a company by the name of Sports Turf Specialties, or STS. Some of you may be familiar with STS. They have a very long history of working on Reading fields. Actually, this Thursday, they'll be working on our Little League fields to just get them ready to play for the springtime. I believe they also redid Morton's Field.
Yeah, we hired them 15 years ago, and they did exactly what you're doing here. They dug it out, put the right stuff in, dramatically, dramatically changed the usability of the field on following rain. I mean, it was night and day, and these are the guys that did it. They also, when Gillette was turf, was not turf, it was grass, that was them. They put Shea Stadium in. I mean, these guys are, you've picked the right people for sure. They're good.
So our goal is to do it once, and our goal is to do it right. With that, I believe this is the last slide of this project that I have to propose today. Before I, maybe, I don't know what the next step is, but either way, before I get there...
Talk about what happened next.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. This actually started back, I think in October. I believe I met with Jenna from REC, Macaniford from Parks, I think it was Billy there.
Yep, Billy, Billy was there.
And...
Chris Bull.
Oh, Chris, thanks. And just had really an informational gathering, had a conversation, what are the next steps? We shared the estimates with them, so they were very comfortable with both STS and the work that would be done, so they have the specific estimates that we received. We went to REC department last, the REC committee last month, maybe last month and a half, got approval and sign off from them, and they direct me into your direction, and I'm now here.
All right. Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, so I'm a little confused by what's in the packet and what you presented. So in the packet, the recommendation was to erect privacy fencing, provide toilets.
I haven't got there yet.
I have two separate, thank you.
Okay.
So I will get to that, though.
Okay.
They will be much clearer in about eight minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, would you like to continue with the second presentation?
Okay, sure.
Let's cut it in two separate pieces, if you want to do that.
Well, I have a question for Bob on the motion, so why don't we let Mike go ahead and finish his presentation.
Do the second one.
Go right ahead, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the second one is a continuation of some of the survey feedback and our capital improvement plan. This one has to do with the very fun topic of temporary toilets. So we had a number of questions in the survey. One of the open kind of discussion items, we had asked our parents, and by the way, 146 parents completed the survey, is do you have suggestions to improve Reading Little League baseball? The most common response was, "The biggest issue I see is the poor condition of our fields and the lack of our bathrooms." So obviously, you see, we're trying to do something with the fields, starting with Majors. The most honest response, and hopefully this is appropriate for the select board, is bathrooms, come on people, we need to pee, and not in the woods of the buildings. I didn't write that, my wife didn't write that, somebody wrote that. I thought it, I was going to say, I told someone at work. I told someone at work, if I didn't get a chuckle there, I know this is not a good night. So either way, so what are the steps taken, right, to get temporary toilets? Once again, worked with, you know, Parks and REC as our starting place to say, you know, Jenna's basically been my quarterback here, where do I need to go and what do I need to do? First off, we, three of our, three of our four fields are located at schools, or on school property, as I would say. So we first got permission from the Barrows principal, Joshua Eaton principal, and the superintendent for the Majors Field, which is near Reading High, as I just mentioned. Obtained temporary toilet permits from the Health Department, which, if you need those, they're the last four slides of this presentation. And then also met with a member of the REC, I'm sorry, Parks Department to actually walk the fields and try to figure out what are the best locations for these, because the other thing that we want to do is make sure that these temporary toilets were discreet at least enough to the residents of our town. Because the reality is, if you know Hunt Field, if you know Eaton Field, and if you know Joshua Eaton Field, we have a Butters. Okay? We just actually had a meeting with probably about six or eight of the Butters that came, and had some questions, had a few concerns. Sometimes the concerns weren't actually about the project, but either way, we got past that. But our recommendation here is to erect privacy fencing to be respectful to the residents that have our fields. Fencing would be on three sides of the temporary toilet. This obviously would be far too large, but this gives you a representation of what it would look like. So meaning, a chain link fence, this chain link that would be used would be the same style that's used as the backstops and the fencing of the park currently. So I think if Majors has that black kind of coated, I think the other three have this kind of galvanized field, whatever it might be. And then obviously, the privacy kind of feature there as well. The temporary toilets themselves are four feet by four feet by eight feet. The proposed fencing, basically a six-inch buffer on either side, we're proposing would be five feet by five feet by eight feet. I didn't put it in here, but I did measure the one down at Turf, too, that the height of that fence is eight and a half feet. All costs would be paid for, once again, by Reading Little League Baseball as a gift to the town. So that would include not only the fencing on three sides at the four fields I'm about to go through, but also the monthly maintenance from the Throne Depot, which would be the company that would provide them.
I'm sorry, what's the name of the company again?
It's Throne Depot.
Throne Depot.
Throne Depot, and the salesperson's name is Louis, but I just don't think he wants to say Lou. This has got to be one of...
Oh, come on, Mike.
You guys need a little pride for me to come back. Okay, all right, so this isn't taped, is it?
Oh, yes, it is.
All right, so someone's laughing at him. All right, so either that or 40th birthday in a couple years, hopefully. Okay, so we're, talk about the placement, okay? So this is Hunt Field, which you may be familiar with. This is the one that, quite honestly, the residents that came, probably about five of them or so were from Hunt, they didn't love this location. Okay? And I basically said, listen, right now what's happening is you have a 10-year-old that's in the dugout, needs to use the restroom, runs over here, and goes over here. So if you want to move this closer down, this would be between basically where the little parking area is...
The playground.
And the playground.
Yeah.
I'm fine, because guess what? They're going to get exercise, and they're going to run about the same distance that they do today, if that is easier to stomach for location-wise. That one, we talked about, and REC can jump in whatever is appropriate, we talked about that this porta potty would be approved at the, basically approval of a new location down here by Parks. It's got to be falling in there. So this one would be the only one, based on the slides that you have in front of you, that we would consider moving. Outside of that, the, you know, the three-sided fence would all...
Was it the neighbors that live on that street that were there tonight?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, it would just be logical, probably.
Both sides.
Both sides.
Yeah, yeah. Joshua Eaton, actually...
Put it behind the scoreboard over there.
What's that?
Put it behind the scoreboard, is that what you've got in mind?
At Hunt, well, we have to be 20 to 30 feet from the road, so that would be too far out.
Yeah, oh, because they got to get in the service.
Because they have to be able to service it. I don't know if I mentioned it, they service it once a week on Tuesdays for Reading.
Is that Throne Depot? I can't remember the name.
Yes, yes, indeed.
I can give you their information.
Lou.
Yeah, Lou.
Lou.
Second field here is Joshua Eaton. I will actually say, we did have individuals from Joshua Eaton that live in this area that were actually thrilled that we were doing this.
Sure.
Very, very, very pleased. They had other concerns about things that have nothing to do with this presentation, and, which I completely understand as well if I was them. So that would be the location here, just as noted. Barrows Field, very similar. Actually, we had folks that know people that live on this street at Barrows. They also said they'd be very excited, because this is a very hot place to go, unfortunately, to the restroom, if you're a child or even an adult. So no change there. And then at Majors Field, we initially would have liked it a little closer, you know, to the dugouts. That being said, you can't put it on concrete or walkways, which are here, and there's a lot of kind of, there's not really flat ground so much over here. So that's the kind of the most logical place that Parks and I decided.
Right near John's office.
Well, actually, it's out of the sightline of the Rise and administrative...
Oh, it's around the corner.
It actually sits off by itself, behind that fence.
Vanessa. One question about the Joshua Eaton Field location.
Yep.
And I don't know how far kids at that age can hit a ball.
Yes.
But is it possible for the, for people running to the bathroom to be walloped by a ball?
It's a great question. Two things I would say to that. One is, at Joshua Eaton, you are talking about predominantly eight, nine-year-olds individuals. So short answer is, for them to hit past this walkway is extremely rare. More importantly, though, this is not to size, this is quite a bit in foul ground.
Okay.
So if you, if you, I guess, kind of foul, if you had a foul, extend a foul line, it would come out here. Once again, it's not to size.
It's out of play. So they're not using the upper left-hand corner field?
Pretty far.
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, that would be a major league shot.
Major league shot. Don't worry anyone on the board.
What's that?
Or anyone on this board.
I'm not going to speak for anyone.
That's a long ways.
But that's, that's, that's a shot and a half.
All right, thank you.
This would be the field I'd be more concerned to, and quite frankly, I'm not concerned.
The kids that play at that, they're just not going to turn on the ball and get it down that corner. I mean, they're young, they're young kids.
Yeah.
You might, to give you some examples, you might see four balls in a game hit outside the infield perimeter in the air.
Yeah.
Just a good idea.
Never worry, even that path that goes up the middle never gets hit.
Yeah.
Or seldom gets hit, shall we say.
It's a great, it's a great point.
Well, and my kids play soccer.
If this was our 12-year-olds, then I potentially could have a concern here. So that was it. Let's just say, the last four, the last four slides are the health permits. So from the REC side, should I kind of go through what we just agreed on, or is that from your side?
Why don't we let Recreation chime in when you're done?
I'm done with the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Emily?
Emily Sissom, 92 John, current chair of the Recreation Committee. So Mike, we came in last month and presented the first part of this presentation with the improvements to Majors Field, and we approved that. We approved a recommendation to the Board, Select Board, to approve it as presented. And as for the porta potties, we have a very complicated motion that I can read.
So before you jump into that, I've seen two motions for this. One has stipulations that will accept it for December 19, 2019, continued upon experience and feedback from the public.
Yeah, that was me.
Is that you? Okay.
But I didn't know what they would do tonight, so...
And then I have the one from Recreation.
Okay.
So is there...
I'm certainly not proud to have mine thrown away.
Okay. So...
Are we acting on these as two separate things?
Are we required, Bob?
It seems like there's two very separate requests, so yeah.
But the field thing, which is kind of the way that it was written here, it's in a separate motion.
So are you okay with reading the, having the motions that we've, have you seen these motions that we're looking at right now?
Probably.
Probably, huh?
Not, not today, but I've seen them, if you wouldn't mind reading them, we'd be happy.
Okay. So John, would you like to read the first motion?
So the first one is moved that the Board approve the infield rebuild at the Majors Tennis Court Field as presented and accepted as a gift from Reading Little League Baseball. So that's kind of a standalone.
Okay. The second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Now, the second motion that I have here includes the stipulation for period, let's wait until that. Police cars go by? Okay. Which is approve temporary toilet placements through December 19, and then we'll review it then, based on experienced feedback from the public. That's the one I have. The other one I have from Recreation has no such stipulation. Is there a reason why we would want to include this? I'm looking at Bob, Jenna, and Emily as far as the temporary approval.
I'll just start and say that, you did say you live on John Street, right? Just for the record, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
I could be mentioned as dad from Hunt Field to my house.
From experience, porta potties are an issue that the neighbors sometimes have a great deal of interest in. Until you place one, you don't... Until you place one, you don't find all the abutters and their interests. And from my experience, having the first policy, and maybe the only policy I ever wrote, was porta potty policy as a town manager, I learned from my experience that you want to be very flexible with the neighbors. Because, again, no matter how well you've advertised and how you, you know, tried to contact them, you don't know. I have no strong opinion that it should be temporary. It just gave you an opportunity as a board, just like you do with typical annual liquor licenses or any licenses, having them look at it.
Okay.
But if Rec has, you know, a great deal of comfort with a different motion, I'm certainly fine with that.
John?
The only thing that I would be concerned, I mean, this is a gift, and maybe you guys have the problem solved, so why don't I just be quiet here where you guys have proposed, and maybe that problem is solved for me.
So, we propose that we recommended that the temporary toilets at Majors Field, Barrows Field, and Joshua Eaton would be accepted as described, adding secured doors to the portable toilets and posting signage with contact information for Recreation Department and Reading Little League in case there's an issue, and possible revisions to the Hunt Field location after Reading Little League meets with the Parks Department to discuss possibility of moving it more toward the top lot and away from the abutters. Super complicated.
No, it's actually pretty straightforward. But you don't have a, you don't have a, I'm sorry.
We don't have a ten-date or a temporary order.
That was really my question, Vanessa.
But I, but we, so that's at your discretion.
At Hunt Street, it started out by being on the other side until those neighbors objected, and then it was moved to the other side. So, I'm just saying, the Board has to be open-minded, and I'm sure everyone will work together.
Yeah. I had a comment, and that is, to sort of meld your proposal, your motion, with the one Bob crafted. And what I like about Bob's is, for the reasons he stated, it gives, it's hard to pay attention to everything in town, everything we do here. So, when the porta potties go up, my guess is, well, he, we may hear or may not hear more concerns. And at least it gives us time to see what the public has to say, and then, you know, if it's, if the solution can be found in another direction, or if it just, that's the way it is, we can't make everybody happy, I'd love the opportunity to be able to rediscuss it, to rediscuss it in December 2019. But I think the response from the residents will be more stayed if we do it this way.
I was wondering if I'm comfortable with the concept of a blended motion, but I was wondering if the timeframe makes sense based on the contract or the conversations with Throne Depot, does like a December 2019 timeframe for revisiting make sense based on what your conversations with them?
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's one point I actually didn't hit on. These, the actual porta potty themselves would be out of there probably about the middle of September.
Okay.
Yeah. So basically, think of it, we'd want them there for the spring, summer, and fall seasons, and then taken out thereafter.
Yep.
I guess the other thing I'd stress, too, is that, obviously, the permit is only good for a year, so I know health is obviously different than you all, but they could always object to this as well.
So it sounds like October might be a good time to revisit?
Or you could just match the March.
Well, my thought is that if we need to change the location of it, if we revisit it in the fall, then Reading Little League has time to reconsider.
I would actually...
Okay.
I think that we're losing sight of, first of all, we're talking about, our job here is the gift. It's not where they go. You know, I mean, Parks and Recs are working on the details, you know, they're the ones that work with the real users and are dealing with the abutters. Now, we will deal with the abutters if they're, you know, bouncing off the walls and they've got to pitchfork some torches out, and that's fine. That's kind of our job to deal with that. But, so, a couple of things I think we need to think about in this motion. Essentially, the way it's been presented, it sounds like the Recreation Department thinks it's fine, there obviously needs to be an adjustment at Hunt Field, not shocking, given that's kind of really surrounded. I mean, that makes sense, but I think that's, for us, it's the gift. You know, that's what we're deciding tonight. The other thing, and I guess I would ask this of you, Mike. If I was the organization making the gift, I wouldn't think that I'd be called on should the town make a decision that it got put in the wrong place to have to fund another gift. I think that becomes the response. I mean, everybody does their best to figure out the right place to put it. You know what? It might not be the right place, you know? It might not be the right place at any of, but at a certain point, we can't ask a private organization that's stepping up to do this in the greater good of the community to be the emeritus maintainer of where it is. I mean, that kind of, at a certain point, we, so, you know, we take the fees that we get from all these fields, and there are fees being paid on all these fields that are supposed to cover expenses. Once the gift is made, if a decision's made that these got to go someplace else, it's kind of not for tonight, I don't think.
John, I think that's a great point. So why don't we move forward with the generic motion, would be my recommendation, and then can we ask then either Bob through the staff, working with Recreation and Reading Little League, to see where we stand as far as the neighbors go come the fall, after we have a full season under our belt? And then if we need further action, then we can consider it at that point, if we need to.
Could I, I'd just like to respond to John. I think I agree with all that he said. I guess my question is, you, they're going to be removed in the fall anyway.
Not the fences.
Not the...
I mean, they're building, they're going to the expense of creating privacy, privacy locations, so you don't have, you know, a big blue porta potty looking at your, you know, all summer long. I mean, it's, you know, it's being done discreetly, which, you know, I think is really, you know, it's really a great gift. Especially for neighbors that are used to, you know, people running into the woods and, you know, next to their garages and everything else, and that's been going on for decades around here.
So, John, I sent you a revised motion by text. Could I ask you to read that?
Sure.
Although, now that I think about it, that one wasn't split in half, so you might have to adjust accordingly.
So, this is to move the accept, let me just read it rather than move it, and then, is that what you'd like me to do?
Yes, please.
Move to accept the gift from Reading Little League for temporary toilets and private fencing at Majors Field, Barrows, and Joshua Eaton. Further recommendations for secured doors on portable toilets managed by Reading Little League and posted signage with contact information. So, yes, I mean, we could certainly go with that, but, see, I think we just defer to Recreation. They...
That was actually their motion?
I know. But I guess for today, what I'm saying to you is, we're just really, we're the gift guys. It's like, you know, let's accept the gift. My recommendation is that we create a motion that we accept the gift, and that we leave, you know, supervision of all of the details to Recreation, because they're the ones really dealing with the, I think. I mean, that's what I think, but I'll do whatever you guys want.
I find that important.
Yeah.
So, John, you want to make a motion?
Yeah. I move that we, that we accept the gift from Reading Little League Baseball that includes temporary toilets on an annual basis and privacy placement of those toilets as based on, you know, Recreation Park's discretion.
Do I have a second?
Well, second.
Any further discussion?
Just one question for the Rec Committee. Are you comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll pass the ball over to you.
That was awful.
It was...
All of us in favor? Great. Mike, thank you very much. Recreation, thank you.
Thanks to the League for, very generous.
Thank you very much.
You know, that field thing is not cheap.
Right.
They're phony and upserious money here. I don't know if you want to share what that's going to be, but I have a suspicion that that's a pretty big number.
Close to $40,000.
Yeah.
So we didn't, I didn't want to lose sight of the generous gift. I think we sort of got bogged down in some of the details, but...
Thank you for your patience.
But thank you.
You're all great. Thank you so much for participating.
Appreciate it.
Great.
So, we have a couple of new, a couple of other items on the agenda. One of them is to review the Town Manager Goals, and the other is a change of manager to OJAs. With Mark not here with us and him being new to the Board, may I recommend that we postpone the Town Manager Goals update so that Mark can, is that fine?
Yep.
Great. So let's move over to the change of manager for OJAs. Bob, am I handing that to you?
No, no need to, there's no one here for it, so you can just read the motion. It's a simple paperwork exercise.
John, can I ask you to read the motions?
Yes.
Five, F.
Moved that the Board approved the change of manager for an annual all-alcohol license employees restaurant and bar at 26 Walkers Brook Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. So, as Andy mentioned earlier, we are postponing the Select Board Liaison assignments so that Mark can participate in that. The only one that we would like to consider this evening is the VASC, the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee, of which I am currently a member, and we need one other person to participate so that we can start those meetings next week, I think.
The first week of May. That's what we're aiming for. We're aiming to advertise all these bacon cheese tomorrow, and then you got to give the two weeks, and that puts us right to May 1st, which is the first week with that. We're good to go for meetings if you are.
Okay. So, the VASC tends to have a heavy May meeting schedule, and then it tends to taper off significantly for the rest of the year, only being called as needed. So, I did speak to Mark, so I know his opinion on whether or not he wants to be a member. Is there any interest in someone who wants to, is excited to join the VASC?
How did the thing sort, I mean, I'm, I have no burning desire. Just tell you that. I'm happy to let you and whoever else...
Four out of five members were interested.
Interested and...
Yes, who wasn't?
No, actually, you were one of...
Where?
Number 25. Well, did anybody rank it above a six?
I got, I got, I can't remember. Let me give you a minute to see.
Well, I did because I'm audit, so...
Where is it on the...
It's the very top.
I think you being audit is really important for continuity's sake.
Yes. And that's one of the things that we had agreed to, that one person remains for two years, and they're staggered. Yeah.
So...
So Andy ranked it a three and John a six.
Yeah. So, I would enjoy, I would, so was I the highest? Oh, here, yes. I ranked it as a three, narrowly beating out Halsey by three points.
And I think Mark listed it.
Or losing out, depending on...
Mark listed it as an 11.
Oh, okay.
I would very much enjoy doing it. I think it's set up that you have one more year to go.
Yes, so we would stagger.
We would stagger, and then I'd be it for two years.
For two years.
But if I wasn't reelected, then you'd have to find somebody else for that spot, obviously. I would enjoy doing it with you. I think I would learn a lot, but there is a week in May during which I will be away.
Someone else could probably cover theirs, aren't you?
We won't leave you hanging. Whether or not you cover it, it is really important that you obviously have two members out of you.
Yes, I understand. Let me...
I don't, we put eight dates down. I don't know, Caitlin, maybe six of them are needed?
Five.
Did you guess? Maybe eight.
Yeah. I think about eighty-something incumbents that you want to see.
Yeah. It is a lot of work.
Okay. So, good times. All right. So, I will, as a point of order, Bob, do we officially need to nominate each of the liaisons for vote?
You are already a member, so you don't need to be nominated, but to add someone else, you should nominate them and second them.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and nominate Andy to the VASC. Can I have a second? Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor pointing Andy to the VASC? Great. All right. And all other liaison assignments will wait until our next meeting, which I believe is May 7.
7.
Thank you, Bob. All right. So, we are on to, we're going to postpone that, approval of minutes. So, John, can I have a motion for the February 26th? That's 6A on this list.
Yep. Moved that the Board approved the meeting, the meeting minutes of February 26th, 2019 as amended.
Do I have a second?
And you want a second to this one?
I think I should abstain since I was a president at the meeting.
Oh, of course, of course. I was trying to be inclusive, but you were present. I'll second it.
Great. Any discussion on the February 26th minutes?
I have a few, a few, a few, a few.
Okay.
First of all, are we supposed to fill out the minutes respectfully submitted by? It's just a, or is that, can we just leave that blank?
Doesn't matter. I can put my name in there and go forward if you want.
Yeah, probably, I think, in case we get audited by the state or something. So, the, the, the second paragraph where it says, Chair Friedman, blah, 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 he started off the meeting by apologizing to our inspectors for what he wrote in the packet, and I think it's important to put in what I wrote, so people, and it was, and I think I said this, understand where, so it would go, wrote in the packet regarding the phrase, and I have this down, I can send it to you, but regarding the phrase, quote, "understand where staff are struggling." And then I think we have two negatives in there. He did not mean it to be negative or taken in a negative matter. I think it's sufficient to say he did not mean it to be taken in a negative manner.
Okay.
Small point. Oh, so on 6A2, top of the page, just a point of, clear, two points, really. It says, "He had a good discussion with the Board of Health regarding his concerns about them not giving out health fines." Technically, the Board of Health doesn't typically give out health fines, so I would just, and to be a little more specific about, because I was, the not giving out enough fines, it just, Claire revised it to read about his concerns about, I'm sorry, his concerns about the lack of food code violations over the last two years, and that's it. And, and I, and I think it's important to say that in the next sentence, he feels, he feels that the Board of Health will pick up the matter moving forward. As a result, he felt it appropriate to remove this item from the agenda.
You don't have to send that out on the space for it.
Yeah, I'll get that. I'll get that to you. And I think, then again, under the, the health fines, them not giving out enough fines, it's not that they, again, they didn't, they didn't give out any public health violations in the past two years, which is why I specified. So, saying them not giving out enough fines is a little, a little rough. And then, finally... And then finally, and I, and I, I feel personally that this should go in, in this exponent, I explained this, the, this. He explained that he felt he was between a rock and a hard place, either go to the Board of Health with his concern and be accused of acting like a board of one, or first discuss with the select board and being criticized for not talking first with the Board of Health. I just want, I stated that, I wanted it to be in official record. I can send you the writing, it is, it is what I said. And I want people to understand that it's a very difficult position for a liaison to be, to be in, you know, it's a lose-lose situation, so. And that's all she wrote.
Any additional edits? All those in favor? Okay. Post? And, and abstain? Abstain, abstain. All right.
Ready for the next one?
Yes, please.
Move that the board approve the meeting, the meeting minutes of March 12th, 2019 as amended.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Great. Edits?
Second, I got to find it.
This is the 12?
Six, it's.
I actually have one edit on page 6B5, near the top. It's the third paragraph. I have it written out here for you, I'll just get it to you after. But it says, Ms. Elver noted, we should use a little less this year in preparation for needing more next year. She suggested we use 900,000 this year. That's all I have. Andy, do you have anything?
On this one, no.
Okay. John?
I'm good.
All those in favor? Post? Abstain? Do you?
Move that the board approve the meeting, the meeting minutes of March 26th, 2019 as amended.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Edits?
I had an edit, or a lot of edits, Caitlin. Just kidding. Oh, come on. So on, what is it? 6C4, I think? It's on the hearing to amend the select board policies one. Oh, yeah. So it says they discussed how to assign or nominate liaisons, and ultimately decided it would be best for each member to rank their choices, and the board can pick from there. I don't know if it's, if the board, we did discuss the reason for doing that during that meeting. The reason was that previously when the, when the chair nominated someone, it put, if someone else wanted to do it, created a bit of an uncomfortable situation. Did we want to put the reasoning for that in here, or is that just?
I don't know if it's necessary.
Necessary, okay.
I actually had one comment on that. It's 63, the paragraph that begins with Angelo, owner of Fresh &amp; Clean. Is his last name listed previously, or do we not?
I couldn't figure it out. It knows I've signed it, he didn't sign it.
Jane will know.
Okay. That would be my edit. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Abstain? Great. Is that it?
Before you adjourn?
Yes.
If you don't mind, this one comment I should have made during my town manager report. We also reached tentative agreement last week, which was confirmed this morning with RCTV to continue as the local provider. The RCTV board has approved the draft contract we had. So next week at town meeting, there is a warrant article to create an enterprise fund, and then to have a budget from them, we have an agreement. So I just wanted to report some.
Great. Thanks, Bob. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, yeah, second.
Great. All those in favor?
You are the chairman for life. This is.
[laughing]